Kasi wala pa. Oh, ah, Kalizo. Okay. Mura di ko kita ni Attorney Joey. Isibo gamay, ha? Ah, okay, okay na. Dayon. George Go King, Councillor, gamay lang. Gamay lang, Maling Kuranan. Di ko kita. So, si Dr. Gaani, uy, isibo kud gamay, na tabunan, ha? Hahaha. So, okay na, okay. Twenty-fourth Regular Session of the 28th City Council is now called to order. Please rise in vocation by Honorable Councillor Aimé Rose Moreno, followed by the singing of the National Anthem and Kagayan di Oromarch.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, God of justice and mercy, we thank you for the gift of life. We thank you for today and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders Kagayanon's need. We pray that as we discuss our agenda and craft policies for our city today, we will always put the people's interest above our own. Remind us that we are in this position not to be served, but to serve the public, just as Christ who is King came not to be served, but to serve. Help us see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. And finally, Father, renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community worthy of the human person. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Mangakababayan ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas. Ayang patibyo, tayo sa siyahanan. Palaw ng puso sa niti po'y kuwai. Luwaw ni hira, huwag ka ng mahiting. Saman luwupi, kitapasi sinil. Sa nagatap, tutok sa sikuyan, sa lami kawpawaw. Ayin atap, tulayakaw, sa pagkaya ni namahal. Ang sakap, matawat, huwag na kuwai, anakinini. Ang ituwi, na talo niya, kayda, pamay niya, patibini. Luwaw na talaw ng walha, di paksi ka, huwag ngit sa pirito. Ang iniyaya, napak, maya ngabi, ang pama-kayam, ka'il sayo.
Please be seated. Atong pambansang awit, next week pa kay, napagipang, ipang modify. Anyway, Mr. Secretary, please do the roll call.
Honorable Joselyn Biro Greges, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer for the First District Councillors. Honorable Agapito Eriberto Giswan. Honorable Roger J. Abadai. Honorable JR Pasqual. Honorable Aimé Rose B. Moreno. Honorable Romeo B. Kalizo, on official business. Honorable George S. Go King. Honorable Jose PPS Abu Junior. Honorable Malvern A. Espasia. For the Second District Councillors. Honorable Ivona Yasini B. Imano. Honorable Maria Lourdes Iskaani. Honorable Jalen Mercedes El Balaba. Honorable James K. Judith II. Honorable Ian Mark Nakaya. Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas. Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atchas. And Honorable Suset G. Magtahas Daba. For the Ex-official Members. Honorable Yan Lam Es Lim, Ligan ng mga barangay President and Honorable John Michael El Seno, City Escape Federation President. There is corom, Madam Chair.
Corom is hereby certified. So, good afternoon, Councillors. Our friends from media. Of course, fellow Kagayanos who are watching our live stream. And I hope you feel comfortable with your place right now. This is going to be three months lang. And I hope at the back, Suset, I hope you're okay, ha?
Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
Personal collective privilege.
Okay, haha. Okay, yes.
Actually, Madam Chair, I was perplexed. And we were surprised with the new changes of our sit plan, sitting arrangement. And this is the first time that I have experienced also for fourteen years in the City Council. Usually, with the consensus of the majority, whatever activities in our council. And as I look at the call of the order of the day, it was not in this scheduled, Madam Chair. Now, consider this as not an opposition. I am willing to be assigned anywhere else. Ayolang di asay mong liguoranan. We did here. Madam Chair, I'm just asking, I'm just asking, what is the importance and urgency of this sitting arrangement? If this is the regular procedure, then we will include this in our internal rules. Thank you very much.
Okay, I got you. So, when I said that there was a sitting arrangement, when was that, last week? I could have, my attention could have been, what you call this? This could have been addressed. I do not know whether to have to have, what you call this? Are we going to have an approval from the body for this? I mean, I do not know, ha? What is the law here? Yes, Councillor? Majority Floor Leader, Councillor Ian Mark Nakaya.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. We tolerate the point of personal and collective privilege raised by Councillor Roger Abadai. It should have been done after the minutes of meeting.
Ah, okay.
At any rate, since we are already in this proceeding and having been recognized by the Presiding Officer, any and all activities conducted by the legislative branch is a function of the consensus of the majority.
Okay.
And correctly put by Councillor Roger Abadai, that it should be collectively discussed
Okay.
by the membership. However, as he also articulated, that we are not in opposition, but considering that the placement sometime and arrangement may not be to the liking of the members of the majority, maybe perhaps it should be also considered.
Okay.
But we are not quarreling the Presiding Officer with her discretion as if I may put it in the manner that this has been implemented. However, in the future, maybe perhaps we can sit down, Madam Presiding Officer.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Majority Floor Leader, Councillor Ian Mark Nakaya. Today, I know that we have to go through the process of rearranging and perhaps then the council will approve before I say so, okay? It is very clear. I didn't know that because when the last time I mentioned about the rearrangement, I didn't hear from anybody that he has to go through the process of approving, no? Sa City Council. It's a learning for me also. So, I apologize for that. And perhaps, how do we do that once they are now, they are now in the sitting arrangement?
We will just leave this setup as arranged today and maybe perhaps through our City Secretary, some conferences will be made by individual or by grouping, by the members of the minority and the majority. And as to where to sit a member in this type of parliament, Madam Presiding Officer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just leave it as is for today.
Okay, thank you very much, Majority Floor Leader, Councillor Ian Mark Nakaya. Yes, Councillor Edgar Cabanlas?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I mean, the old tradition of the sitting arrangement of the members of the City Council in my experience in the past is based on the ranking.
Ah, okay.
To make it medyo delete kayo problematic. Na ang number one, you need two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Para nga, di ka mag-away asa'ta malingkon. That was the practice before. And pero I think the Vice Mayor can, of course, for purposes of you know, balancing everything, I mean, the Vice Mayor can propose that.
Thank you.
Especially that the Vice Mayor is the Presiding Officer. So, mukha na ang atong system kanyatong, para wala'y mag-ilong. Kasi una dispero dito, so lahi, basa ako. Pwede siya ku dito repeat, kay, wala problema. Gusto ko ma-balik dito. Kay ulos, kayo, niya ku dini, nga. I am number six. Supposed to be, di protocol is. We arrange that in order not to have any, you know, discussion. Say, arrange, let the Secretary do it. Yabakin na to, 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 secretary mo mega bu, sitting arrangement. And for the secretary not to get the air of the members of the City Council. He did that through that procedure.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, it's very clear. Because when I was at once, what you call this, a council, I was never asked where to sit. I was assigned. So, it is an experience for me, thinking all along, that this is acceptable, but I do not want this to happen. I want still to follow what is really legally accepted in our plenary. Delete ko gusto magbudo. I am for this arrangement so that whatever, delete na lang for three years, mo'y imong matupad. Then after three months, hopefully la, inasadimong matupad. So, we, I do this for a better, secure relationship to each one of you. When I was deprived before, when I was sitting at the back, wala, I never was given a chance in the middle. I was never given a chance to sit in front. And I was never, ever experienced. And they're going through the process of, what you call this, following the procedure. There is a vote session or discussion. So, ang ako lugar for me, in my own opinion, I just want to be friendly to everybody. I give them the opportunity, katong naidulduo, dito napo sa likod. Kay, ako na ako sa tubangan, to be honest. Boraglayo kay, si Councillor Cabanlas for me. Sa ako lang ha, being seated here. So, layo pod sila ni Michael Sen, Councillor Seno, and the rest. So, it's not going to be permanent, it's going to be three times, no? Siguro, what you call this, every three months. It depends na on you. So, katungnaitabo sa akong sitting arrangement is because mo'y ako nakatunan last time. So, in this way, if this is what it should be, why not, no? Mr. Secretary. So, let's do. The, I don't know how you will go about it, Majority Floor Leader. How we will go about it? Would you like me to give it to, for approval?
Over a cup of coffee, we can informally discuss things like this, Madam Presiding.
Yeah, that's why when the last time I mentioned about rearranging, somebody could have already told me so that I will know. Because things are not, I'm not telling everybody that I know everything. Sometimes I base it on my experience.
Okay.
Yeah. So, ato nag-i-discuss, okay? So, ang ako is not only, this is only for three months because I want it again that mag-amo. Like for example, the reason why I put Attorney James and Councillor Balaba. You want them to be friends. Akong giingnan ha, pakarago na, ang magpabalong. Way back, ay na na, way back, Kaliz days, ay na na. Padayuna na in 'yung blog. Anyway, sige, we will, let's do that, okay? With the permission of everybody for now, is this okay for you for now? Just for three months, I would like to ask. Okay, rabaninyo, then the following, next three months, then we, it will be real, we will discuss. What is the consensus?
This is not traditional, huh? Because your experiment of Madam Presiding Officer of having relationships be built upon a sitting arrangement. I do not know after three years or two years and six months if their relationship will prosper and your direction would have, would build successes. That's, that remains to be seen. But there is in the legislative branch, Madam Presiding Officer, as a matter of principle, I remember, one of the values is stability. And the stability of a legislative branch depends not only on leadership, but also in the mutual feeling of content among the membership. So, if we impose, I do not know if it would go a better, if it would reach to the point of the good intention. So, the best and most cordial is consensus.
Okay.
Consensus.
That's okay. I have no problem with that.
So, again, if the Presiding Officer would allow, we also have no quarrel of you're trying to accomplish your personal goal in trying to mend some issues between and among the membership. It would come. I know that for sure because after our one month in differing positions in July, Madam Presiding Officer, we have greatly accomplished many things.
Thank you.
Because we are not here for individual and personal interest and it's for the best interest of the people. But in arrangement, that's, that would be another thing because some of the members may not be openly and publicly speaking, but they also would like to have seatmates who are, whom they feel that they are very confident and can relate openly. So, for that, maybe perhaps we'll give a little due on the privacy of every member. So, delete kayo, delete kayo, sige lang, okay, rabanin. Pero
Before, if it's okay with you, karoon, then we can do another, ano?
Siguro, our secretary can be the middleman in the medium of our points of how we would like to arrange in the next sessions, Madam Presiding Officer.
Yeah, that's no problem, really no problem with me. It's just that because of based on my experience, I was never, I was never asked where I would like to sit. So, sometimes you have this experience with, you thought all along, nga, okay, they, predili they, okay. Because I was never referred before, I was never asked before where I want to sit. So, karoon, bauan na ako, then, Mr. Secretary, then do the arrangement, what is comfortable for them. Because I try my best to give you the most comfortable that you don't have to struggle for any. So, ako masabtan gina ako. And I will take it as something, nga, I have to also to learn, nga, kinanatdi ay ang proseso. So, salamat kayo, thank you very much. But then, ang ako lang hangi, if there is something like that, then someone could have taught me. Because this was discussed earlier. So, someone could have approached me, nga, delete man na in 'yung ano. Because I do not presume that I know everything. Delete ko tanan, kay, balok ko tanan. Sometimes, malagin na, base experience, base sa kuwan. So, earlier, you could have told me, nga, delete pwede na because consensus sa atong mga Councillors. Now, I know. So, thank you very much. Yeah, iduna to, Mr. Secretary, whether we have to proceed with this arrangement or rearrange again. So, it all depends on you. I'm only here to support you, whatever you, problems you have. Unse 'yung kinalan ako, or whatever, nga, akong matabang, no? Will always be here for all of you. Maura gitna, okay? Yeah? Okay? Okay? Mga tigulang. Yes, yes?
Madam Chair, except lang, ino, wala may problema sa ako, si Councill Balaba, ino, basi di siya may mood. Naasas sa akong likod, pero, pero tiyao. Ang akong tuyo lagit, Madam Chair nga. Okay, matuhangi mo, Madam Chair, kung una may, unse masabutan na to, pero, na siguro'y duhagid ka, mga plastad na, nga, delete kitat, imubabol gina sa, siguro, considering sa leadership position, like the Majority Floor Leader and Minority Floor Leader, the rest, monang atong
Delete magid mo matandog, kamundoha, diha, magid mo permee, kamundoha. Magbaylo baylo ramo ano, oo.
Mala na magklaro. Pero pwede pa, balik niya pon, diha inana. Mala nga, magklaro, sa pag-usap nga, unsa manggaling rearrangement, pagpabilin mani, or ma-balik ta, or laing nga ma-usap, kata lang, magklaro lang ako, Madam Chair.
Okay, kamundoha, permanente, namodiha, kamundoha, oh, delete naman mo matay.
Ang ako man, si Councill Balaba, basi ma-problema siya, nga, nasasakong likod. Or pwede pa po me magtapad, nga, kaming duha nga ano, okay, radyapon, either.
Siya may muha pakni mo sa likod. Anyway, it is very clear. So, let us proceed. Yes, Majority Floor Leader, Councillor Ian Mark Nakaya.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. Kamit na atong five years old nga kuwan, no pad. Move, Madam Presiding Officer, to dispense with the reading of the minutes of meeting on the January sixteen, two thousand twenty-three and to consider the refreshing of this copy to remember as the reading itself.
Second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
I likewise move for the approval of the said minutes of meeting.
Second, any objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
We have actually three plus one reporters in this session, Madam Presiding Officer. First is Councillor Roger Abadai as regards the issue on the water supply in Barangay Punan. Next is Councillor John Michael El Seno on the limiting the load capacity of trucks hauling sand and gravel and other aggregates in the city.
on the limiting the load capacity of trucks hauling sand and gravel and other aggregates in the city. The third reporter, Councillor Aimy Rose P. Moreno, is uh, would like to differ her special report in the future time, Madam Presiding Officer. Instead, uh may I, as uh in lieu of her differing the schedule, may I render a special report on the, the uh uh city ordinances of Cagayan dioro. And uh, Councillor Malvern Esparsia would like to render a special report if the Presiding Officer would uh allow uh as regards uh the load, the loading and unloading of uh, of uh transportation vehicles during peak hours. So, Abadai, Seno, Nakaya, and Esparsia.
Okay, Councillor Roger Abadai, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, uh, Madam Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Jocelyn Bebot Rodriguez. For your very uh open heart in considering our concerns. Uh, my members of the 28th uh City Council and all people who are listening and watching us online and in the gallery. Uh, may hapon, kaninong tanan. Actually, this is not a leap-over uh special report. I used to render reports about COWD until now. Uh, still, the problem is still uh recurring, no? I should not have to bring this uh uh topic uh in the City Council, but considering that it was sent to me in Gmail. And they are asking, as orang nagpakilooy na ba? And so, and I believe that the City Council office also received a Gmail, and some of you, about this uh concern. Now, this coming from James Kwan, from uh the source of this uh, the source of this complaint from Ipanan and other areas of Cagayan dioro. Uh, please, I may read, I will read the context of their Gmail. Uh, this is uh asking our uh help, no? Uh, in vernacular, uh, gikanekan James Kwan, dated uh in January 15, 2023. So, it stated sa Binisya, mayong adlaw sa tanang membro sa CDO, uh City Council. Kami nga mga resident, dirisa Cambridge Uni- uh Cambridge subdivision, uh Billy Amar subdivision, Regency subdivision, balaus Ipanan, okuban pang dia sa apil bulwa nga apektado sa problema sa water source na ngayo og tabang og manginaot, nanginaot nga unta masolusyonan na kining problema namo sa tubig. Uh, kay dako kaayo nga kahassol og perwiso nga ang gehatag ni ini sa among pagpamuyo. Kami nanginaot nga matawag ninyo ang atensyon sa Cagayan dioro water district og sa mga masolusyonan kini sa daling panahon. Kami magpadayon og suporta kaninyo, kaninyo, salamat, oh God bless. Muling teks sa uh GJmail sa ni Mister Kwanu. So dililang siguro uh kining area sa Ipanan mga subdivision. Imagine, almost all subdivision, so, apil pa sa patagan, adha places of Cagayan dioro ang problema sa water district. Ang kraganang, ang tubag sa water district, imong tawagon, naasilay mga kakandak sila og tawana quarter repair or mga kuwan, kasigibag repair. So, akong naimbawan, as I interviewed some of the personnel in the city, city water, COWD. I learned nga, kana ilang booster plant dia sa ma- nasa kamamanan og dinis sa balulang, ilang gay off during uh nighttime kay kuno, magkusebing sa fuel. Ang daginot, manisila unya perwiso nila ang mga tao sa Cagayan dioro, mga consumers. Monang ngahinay kayo ang presur, og hugaw, may bawan ninyo ang bundag. Pag unang tubod sa tubig, hugaw, kay ano man? Kung ma-stop ang boosting, kana magpagdakwan sa tubig, mulugdang unang mga, kana mga laog niya. So paggandaranam unang ibuga dito sa tubig, muna eh, kos nga nong lubog ang atong tubig. Kay ilang kapalungon during nighttime, kana dua ka booster. So mona mga uh membro sa atong kuwan, kauban ako sa City Council. Siguro uh di man kung ingon nga short sila sa mga expert dia sa COWD og labi pa sa atong Board of Directors, no kay, kini perinialan yong problema. So I think for the last time, we have to call this water district, not only kuwan the manager or even uh any member of the Board of Directors to appear before this uh City Council or the committee. Parang nga, na sumanatasi gigi reklamo sa mga katawan dinis sa Cagayan dioro, moro ya pon ang resun. So, to put an end of this uh problem, Madam Chair and my colleagues, I think it uh, I will uh refer this to the Committee sa Public Utility. And the proper authority should be invited in order to explain uh what this uh situation that has been raised in our Office Director German and Madam Chairman and my colleagues. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councillor Roger Abadai. So let us uh refer this to the Committee. Committee on Public Utilities with Councillor Romeo Calizo. Okay, thank you very much. Any comment? Yes, Councillor Attorney James Judith?
Madam Chair, sa imodiha, sa tungalandong BC Mayor Jocelyn Bebot Rodriguez, akong tinawag ng mga kauban sa konsyo, sa inyong tanan, maupay. Inani lang, gusto lang ako idugang sa timing pod nga nabungat ni Consel Roger Abadai ang problema sa panubig dia sa first district, labina dia sa may Ipanan. Ang ako lang, gusto na akong isingit kay, uh nasayod manggod ko, isamang ko sa for the record nga nagdrop sa katong memorandum agreement sa South Balibago, nagitagagataha sa atong nakbayan nga may mag-supply og panubig dia sa kining, ang South Balibago Resources Incorporated, Con SBRI og Water District, apil na podgani ang City Government, so tripartite agreement to. Gusto lang ako uputatawan nga atong sa, sa committee hearings na'to nga mapungat tunato kay, gusto po na ako mapaluap kung unsa na yinaitabu kay base sa maong agreement na saad ang South Balibago Resources Incorporated nga mahatag og 10 million liters per day, MLD sa maong area, sa first district. So ang ako is, na unsa den tuoy naitabu ato nga trabaho man na sa South Balibago Resources Incorporated. Kay gani, ingon magali sa usaka artikulo, September 11, 2021 na human na daw ang maong project, usaka water treatment plant, diha sa may bulaw Ipanan. So ang pangutangan nga nagtagad na kung gan'ti karoon, unsa na yinaitabu ni ato, astang Cagayan dioro.
Thank you, Councillor Attorney James Judith. So, again, refer it to the Committee on Public Utilities with Councillor Romeo Calizo. So, the next speaker will be uh Councillor John Michael Seno, you recognize?
Thank you so much, Madam Presiding Officer. The Honorable Jocelyn Bebot Bautista Rodriguez. And of course, to the members of the 28th City Council, Francois Namidia, Belo Cagayanons. May hapon kanatong kanan. It is said that uh infrastructure is the backbone of economic growth. It is, it improves access to basic services such as clean water and electricity. More access to agricultural produce connects community, create jobs, and both businesses. To honorable Presiding Officer, to the members of this uh City Council, and to all those who are present in this august hall, good afternoon. I'm standing here today, speaking to all the good members of this council to propose a much-needed ordinance that would protect and preserve the arteries of our beloved city of Cagayan dioro. The imposition of a weight limit upon trucks that would pass by or traverse our city and barangay roads. Our city and barangay roads serve as arteries of our city. Wherein the bloodline of the city passes by. This bloodline pertains to the people and the commercial activities, the transportation sector, to name a few. It is my humble and respectful proposal to this honorable City Council that we pass an ordinance, an ordinance which will impose a weight limit upon big trucks that will pass by our city and barangay roads in order to prevent its fast deterioration. Or, the second option is we will uh improve the thickness sa ato ang kadalanan and will not allow sa katong mga trucks nga ang ilahang karga basa pa. While it is true that the presence of many big trucks in an area is a sign or an indication of its economic growth, which are all grateful for. This may not be taken at the expense of the arteries of the city, our city and barangay roads. I am saddened to the report to this council that after several inspections of our city and barangay roads in the city, we have found out that several of these are already in poor conditions. Taganagayay lubak-lubak, Madam Presiding Officer. I have here some pictures, no? Kana sa may kamamanan road, diha gapangagi ang dagong trucks. Laos dito sa may tagwanaw, padulong din dito sa may Masterstones Avenue. Next slide, please. Rantrul lang na'to, Gustarks. Sige, Gustarks. Ah, okay. Na sa may kamamanan, diya pon na. National High School, bagupanan na simento. Cracks na diya pon, Madam Presiding Officer. Sige, Gustarks. Kini sa may Kanituan Road. I have seen dia sa may Kanituan, in fact uh last week, na ay na disgrasya tungod sa uneven roads, Madam Presiding Officer. Pagatpat area. Kita ni mo, Madam Presiding Officer. Tuba na gyud? Hilis na. Munay kahimtang sa atong kadalanan lugar bali, Madam Presiding Officer. Dia sa may Kanituan, Pagatpat, and then sa may kamamanan. Kana pa ang atong nakuha lugar, Madam Presiding Officer. Angga kahit tabo manggod, nga nong ang ato ang dalan magcrack, naobisan ugbagu pa. Tungod kay ang atong city roads, ang thickness niya is only eight inches. Now, we have allocated uh in uh Pagatpat Road re-blocking sa 2021, under sa atong general fund, five million pesos. In 2022, 10 million pesos. In 2023, 10 million pesos. A total of 25 million pesos, Madam Presiding Officer, which cannot compensate the revenues which we are collected sa ato ang sand and gravel. Diligud maka-compensate. But now, Madam Presiding Officer, I have talked with the City Engineering Office, iadjust nila ang thickness. Instead of eight, gihimo nilang 12. So mas baga, baga tagamay karoon kay uh sa DPWH. Kay I have talked with the Construction Division of uh DPWH Regional Office, kasagala ang ilang ginahimo is around 11. Pero bisan pag-unsa kabaga ang imuhang dalan, Madam Presiding Officer, ang mahitabu diha labina kana na i-karga nga basa. Puno kaayo. Kay ang mga truck karoon, Madam Presiding Officer, kung ang auto na i-pagamayay, ang mga truck pod karoon padagkuay. Kung makita, ni mo ng 12-willil truck, that is around 30 to 40 cubic meters ang karga. Makita, gini mong andalan kung magian uyugud tungod sa kabugat, Madam Presiding Officer. Kung ang ilang karga paggyud niya na, basa ang mahitabu, ang tubig musulod dito sa katong gihimo na'to nga base course. Before na siya simintuhon, munas siya ang katong balas, bato, yuta nga gisagol, gimmix, motong agian sa pisod. Munas siya ang base course, Madam Presiding Officer. Kung basa ang yuta, Madam Presiding Officer, musulod ang tubig. Once nga musulod ang tubig, Madam Presiding Officer, na nasa instances nga naasi muliyok sa ilalong. Kay syempre, basa naman siya humok, magian sa daggo. Hangtod nga malusaw, Madam Presiding Officer, tingalan na lang ka nga bisagun sa kabaga, mo-crack diyan ang imuhang dalan. That's the reason behind. And kung makita galing ninyo, kung nakabantay mo, pakakita gini mo trucks nga, basa pa kaayo, gaagian ang dala. I don't know kung naabatay ordinance na niya na, which kanapod una ato ang tunan, no? We limit sa karga or i-impose na'to nga diligud pabahiun ang katong na i-basa pa ang ilahang karga, Madam Presiding Officer. This gradual deterioration of our city road conditions would add additional burden to our city government. In terms of road repairs, to name a few, we should mindful of this, considering, considering our scarce resources. We cannot afford to have our roads get deteriorated and destroyed, but something that we could easily prevent. The imposition of a weight limit would help us preserve the condition of our city and barangay roads, and my second proposal is that uh we will not allow sa katong uh muaging uh basa pa ang ilang karga with uh, with uh uh good intervention of the city engineering that we will improve instead of eight inches into 12 inches ang kabagun sa tong dalan. Uh, from time to time, we have received many complaints, sulti pa nila, murado og suba nga gakamalhan. Kanadihang sa may Pagatpat Kanituan Road, no kay diha man gyud gaagi ang ato ang mga sand and gravel, no? Bugat lagi gyud. And uh, to end this, why I humbly submit to the wisdom of this honorable City Council, I sincerely hope that this matter would be given attention and be referred to appropriate committee for further deliberation and more detailed study be conducted. Akong sultyon, pagbalik, Madam Presiding Officer, it's just my proposal, but we will ask the experts on how to solve this issue on sa ato ang kadalanan nga, dili kayo gapangcracks ang atong makadalanan. Uh, kung imong lang taon, dako tagakagastu sa atong road re-blocking versus sa revenue nga atong gagakolekta. Thank you so much, Madam Presiding Officer, Kong Hi Fatchoy.
Kong Hi Fatchoy.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Happy New Year, happy Chinese New Year, diya. Thank you very much, Councillor Michael Seno. Actually, uh, that is a very good report, no? Uh, is been a problem for so long. Uh, any comment first? Any comment? Is there any comment? Wala, okay. Yes, Councillor Attorney James Judith?
Madam Chair, gusto lang ako nga malamdagan pod kay base na sayod pod si Councillor Seno, ani. Gusto lang, di ba na amay magagad-manda sa, sa taned, sa, sa truck kung di ba na i-bayad sa ciudad? Gusto lang ako mabiwak kung unsa galing na siya ka ng suklip ba na siya sa DR, nagda-watan na'to? Kaning kakadakon sa truck?
Yes, yes, Councillor Michael Seno, please.
Ako nalang magtubag kay akong irmano, akon research pod. But uh, that is delivery receipt. Sa una ang atong practice na Madam Presiding Officer, 10 cubic ra ang ato ang DR.
Okay.
From uh, I think uh I think there was an increase of around 50 pesos per cubic na ang gi-impose karoon sa city. And then, uh, we will also include that nga, kinanglan ang DRs would be katugyong kung unsa ang ilahang karga. No? Uh, say for example, 15 cubic, 15 cubic yudang, ang DR. Kay sa una manggod, limit lang into 10 cubic, which is uh, akuntan aw, alkan sipod ang ciudad. However, kininginana niya manggod DR, usahay pod ani, ang mahitabu pod, ato lambatayan, kay ilabay punin nila dito sa consumer. Ang consumer ang ilang ipabayad silbi. Kay gusto nila, ang ilang ginan siya dilimatandog. So kung atong patas anog ayaw ang atong DRs pod, ihapak nila dito sa consumer, ang ato pong mga kagmay nga maghimo ugbalay, medyo bugat tapod sa ilaha. So munangga, gatimbangon karoon na, Madam Presiding Officer. However, na na-increase sa ato ang mga DRs na.
Okay, thank you very much. Any more comment? Actually, the, yes, Councillor Edgar Cabanlas, please?
Uh, thank you very much, Madam Chair. I don't want to comment on this, because uh this is a little bit complicated. It involves everything, everybody. You know, you cannot stop progress, everything is going big. Big airports, big roads, big uh, of course, big trucks, you cannot avoid that. So the issue here is uh kana mo kurosayang ang atong mga dalan, nakaraanan na, kana kasag kanama ko dosayang ang atong mga dalan, nakaraan na na, kanakasagura, guba, og ah, nipis pod. I mean, sometimes, yeah, you cannot blame the trucks. You can also blame the contractor who constructed the road. Basin, kita'y hupe po na. So, ah, you have to balance everything. Nanay mga tao nga nakapalit, nagmangdagong truck. Tingali niis, kagian duro, bumino sa kalibu ka truck. If you stop from them from using that, na dagu, parbonis lang mga utang. So, delay na atong atong magaling ka ng limitahan, delay ni Abraf. Kinalan imo, ginihimo on sa hinihinay. Eklikhanin mo mga tao, ng negosyenting, nag-invest o millions and millions of pesos. Nakita na to, bis kagian duro, grabe ang construction. We have seen that. So, ang first kitingali na to, daning abuhaton is, ah, quality. Quality sa atong mga dalan. Oga, ah, monitoring. Kaya, kung ini madunduma, kung ini ma-kita, Madam Chair, na ay way bridge dia sa mulugan. Antanan truck, ngangdaggo, magi dia, timbangun nila. Tanaw nila, kung ikaw ni subera base mo capacity. And if you are loading more than your capacity, niyap to pay penalty. That would be one way of, ah, kining, ah, pero mula gina, magbutang matagway bridge, ucha mo ni paghebalo, ngamuni, kadako siya, eh, ako di, mangko, trucker, di masuko. Abot, kebulok ka ba, karga na na, forty cubic, cubic meters. So, ang atong buhaton, yes, maikining, ah, maikining, ah, una-una, pero lagi komplikado, komplikado kay pasinong, ah, kasagura raba ang mga truck karoon, ang mga gagmay, katunang mga sikahanan. Ang kasagura mga bagong truck, mga daggo na gyut. Kay like, ah, para manasah, paspas ang construction. So, manatungman na yan, and let us consider everything. Let us not do it fast or gradual lang atong pagdesisyon ini. Thank you very much, Madam.
Ah, thank you very much, Councilor Edgar Cabanlas. Any more comment? Yes, Councilor Roger Abaday?
Ah, in addition, Madam Chair and my colleagues, so I submit with the recommendation also of Councilor Edgar Cabanlas, let us have to be careful on this. Let us have a careful study. Kaya remember that, every vehicle using the road, from motorcycle to the heavy equipment or truck, they are paying road user tax according to weight. So, is it also unfair nga nagbayad sila tax for the road use? And aside from that, the city is, and the barangay is also generating income from the sun and gravel that was extracted from our quarry. See, I think sixty, forty months sa barangay is, you know, sixty, ah, sixty sa barangay, oh, forty, sixty. So, those are things that we have to consider. Yeah, ah, kinalan, we have to weigh it carefully that nothing will be displaced, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilor Roger Abaday. Any more comment? One more, last. Councilor Attorney James Judith?
Siguro isip dugang na lang sa ingonopod ni Consel Cabanlas nga mag-inahinay sa lugar takabay niya na, og naapotong sugyut ni Consihal Jan May Caseno. Ang ako lang, siguro compromise or we meet halfway. Ina ni, kanang, si ina tagdako ng atong dagbayan, kinagin malalis. Pero akong kakita, ngano, siguro ang pagpatuman sa gini monitoring team sa, sa pag issue sa DR, ako nakita. Kaya, si ina tagdako, nakakakita mga tractors din eh, grabe na mga gambalay, kaya pangtuko din eh. Pero sa, sa akong nabawahan, meron wala pa tay riport, meron una ang magaling, gamay ra ang atong income, kakakuha sa DR. So, una, kung gusto nga masairan, Consihal Jan May Caseno nga, pwede siguro nga tutukan na lang na'to, kaysa't tumutunggingo ni Consihal Abaday nga na ay road user tax. Kung nga, pagpatuman na na'to, kaya katung DR, di ba mo basipod sa taned, sa truck? O kunsa pod ang kadaghan, ang gehol, atong truck, matag deliberate. So, ang ato lang is, siguro pagpatuman istriktuhan na'to, na delay malkanse ang atong dagbayan. Kaya delay maggyut na'to malalis, magmula go, maggyut ang atong dagbayan. Masinso, maggyut kaya dito, maggyut apadalong.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilor Michael Seno.
Thank you once again, Madam Presiding Officer. Yeah, I submit also with the recommendation of Attorney Edgar Cabanlas and Councilor Roger. That is why, ah, in my prayer, I have manifested that we would rely on experts on this.
Okay.
On how to solve this issue, no? Katulag akong isulting, ah, ah, posible nga ang thickness or atong sa waybridge, atong, ah, by the way, just for information of everybody, I have talked with the Construction Division of DPWH, no? Ang dagan lang nila karoon or gagagamit nga waybridge is only in El Salvador. Ang sa Puerto nga waybridge, kuba daw. Ang sa Puerto nga waybridge. So, kana lang mga entry points, butangan ba ka na'to waybridge? So, depende sa, ah, pag-deliberate na tuhan ni Madam Presiding Officer. But, usalang gyut akong gusto na ipabot unta, nga I hope na delay ma-mess conception sa atong mga kauban is that, ah, ang kanang paspas nga pag-deteriorate sa atong kadalanan, I hope nga delay pod ina na, usaputong-puntong nga gisulti ni Attorney Edgar kanina, basin sa contractor pod, na instead of eight inches, basin seven na di ay, or seven and a half, or six and a half roba ka di ay. So, wa'ta kabalo, ah, Madam Presiding Officer, that is why, ata'pund, ah, imbitarun tanan gyut, parang masaptan ato, kung unsa gyut ang, ah, tinugdan lugar, Madam Presiding Officer. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Councilor Michael Seno. One last, Councilor Edgar Cabanlas.
Kini, ako lain magugay, bukan dun, buta, ini, equal ba ang atong pagti. I don't think, ah, satanipod niyan, trucker pod, basin, uh, sigmutur gila. Dagan maguna atong, ah, gagamit sa dalan, di, ramugod ang mga trucks. Di, ramagamang haulers sa mga sun and gravel, ako ampuhan ang gravel. But, ah, ah, possible nga, everybody could be contributor to this, ah, issue. So, bantyan na'to na, ato na tanawon, kina, namay mga truck kadagko, kadagko karga nga delay hauler. So, ato na tanawon, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilor Edgar Cabanlas. Yes, you have to look at this matter, review the ordinances, because what I noticed, overloading, dagang ginoverloading. Kaya kapitan pa ko, problema ko na na. In fact, kanang ilang na nga tagak-tagak nila nga mga sun and gravel, hindi nila galimpuyuan? Ang barangay ang galimpuy. And I noticed during campaign period, no? When I have to go to, what you call this, hinterland, in thirty minutes, I counted twenty trucks going back and forth. Now, you have to look into the matter because ang truck grabe gyut kaabog. Abog, I do not know, magbalik-balik ang abog, ang mga balay nahimong puti na. I don't know whether it is the fault of the contractor, nga nipis ang ilang, ah, kuwan, kaning dalan, or are we strict on the implementation of health, ah, health issues? Kaya sa dugay nga, nagbalik-balik sa hinterland, grabe kaabog. In fact, the families living there, naanat the town sila sa kaabog, but then, mula gina, ang uban nga asma tungod sa kaabog sa dalan. I hope this can be taken into consideration, not only the concreting, not only the, the overloading, but the health of this, ah, hinterland. I am glad that this was brought up, kaya para ma-check ginadiha. Kaya gabalik-balik na ginadiha ang kaabog, and Pagatpat Kanituan, grabe gyut. And also, my experience, no, sa barangay Nazaret, go overload gyut. So, how do we, how are we able to, ano, to, to, what you call this? To, to check whether they are weighing the load that is really required by the city? So, review the ordinance, okay? So, thank you very much, Councilor Michael Seno. The next, ah, the next speaker will be Council, ah, Councilor, Majority of Floor Leader, Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. The last time that the city council have, ah, initiated the, the compilation grouping of various classifications of, ah, the ordinance of the city, was that in two, nineteen ninety-four, Mr. Secretary? That was, ah, known to be, and up to now, the city codified ordinance of nineteen ninety-four. And in the previous council, I have already made a special report on the matter. In fact, there was already a, an initial discussion, Madam Presiding Officer, with the secretary, with the Assistant City Secretary, and some of the staff in the council to draft the codification of our ordinances. Ah, so that, ah, in case, ah, someone would ask for, for a regulatory or a social development, ah, measure that has already been acted by the city council, or the member perhaps would like to check certain references, so that he or she can introduce appropriate measure before the August body, ah, it would be readily available according to, ah, class and classifications. However, we, we haven't proceeded because, ah, ah, completely, because some of the, ah, programs of the city government have not yet been, ah, in a code. Because our proposal, Madam Presiding Officer, is, ah, codes, Book of Codes of the City of Cagayan Dioro. In other words, for the health sector, one code. For the barangay governance, one code. For peace, security, one code for the youth, senior citizens, in social development, another code. And some other general principles that the city council have already enacted, another code. So that, for example, if the barangay would like to seek guidance as to how they will proceed on certain matter, ah, the Book of Code on barangay governance will be provided to them. And for the sector of the women, the youth, another code will be provided separately, separated already, Madam Presiding Officer. I raise this again, Madam Presiding Officer, to seek, ah, the cooperation of each and every chairperson of our honorable committees in the city council, so that we can already arrange everything and compile them in, in one book. We call Book of Codes of the City of Cagayan Dioro. So, I understand we only have two, three, or four, ah, books ah, not yet available for reason that we haven't enacted yet the code on these sectors. So maybe perhaps, ah, in the lengthy period that we are still available in the term, the tenure of office, two thousand twenty-two to twenty-five, ah, this would be enacted by the city council during your term and during the time of the membership of this twentieth city council, Madam Presiding Officer. And in, in this, ah, ah, manner, we would like to constitute the Committee on Laws and Rules to act as the codification committee, Madam Presiding Officer, so that it can proceed according to the plan. Maybe perhaps there would be changes in the plan for as long as we will act collectively on the matter and on, in pursuant to the interest ah, of the council as well as our constituency of Cagayan Dioro. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor, Majority of Floor Leader, Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya. That is a very good idea. Kaya sa kadugayun nga panahon, wala gitah, di ba? And hopefully, ah, we can, ah, plan on that, no? Plan on that, so that delay na libog. Delay na libog, dang libro, pagga senior, dito ra, open ra. Pagga, ah, unsa tawag ano eh, ah, at the committees, sa health, na na diha. So, I, ah, this is not, ah, this is very, very, what you call this, very helpful to all of us and to the constituents, no? Kaya especially the academe. Wala, maglibog town sila, asa pa ingon. In fact, we do not have our legislative library, and we're planning for that, no? So, very good. I hope we can do that as soon as possible. Thank you very much, Councilor, Majority of Floor Leader, Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya. You're the next speaker? Who's the next speaker? Ah, okay, Councilor Bernie Bitok Bitok, you're, you're recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before my special report, adjusta by manifestation, na I strongly support Ian Mark Nakaya's sa kuwan proposal, Mr. Chair, kaya, like for example, usamis sa kat kami mga akoradi, nandamay pa ko. Bagong na Consihal, dapat, preana, sige lang kung mandamay kang Sir Tor, kung unsa ang about any nga ordinance, o sa about any. And also, this is also a great help also sa atong mga OFWs nga, wala diri sa Cagayan Dioro, that they, they might check also on, on sa ang mga ordinance. And also, atong media, nga atis sila pod, napod sila idea, before the comment, atis napod sila yamasulti, na muna ang mga existing ordinance. Okay. Madam Chair, again Vice Mayor Bebop Rodriguez, I'll just make this fast. Ah, for the past also days nga, kita lagi sige man taog biyahe. Ah, I know everybody would agree, ah, my, 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 my colleagues, ako mga fellow councilors nga, grabe na gyut ka-traffic ang Cagayan Dioro. Number one, because of course, we have a lot of road constructions. And number two, nga permitin ako my experience, ah, Madam Chair, labina kanang mga mayong taog, kanang busy nga mga oras like six to eight AM, tapag uli, five to seven PM. Ako nabantayan, Madam Chair, nga dagan na kaitay mga establishment karoon, nga mag-unload o mag-load sa ilahang mga stocks or what, products or whatever, nga mismo dia sa kani nga mga oras, and maka-traffic yun eh. Before I proceed sa special report, nag, nagwa nasago, nagtexasago kay ano, kay Sir Torx then, nakita na ko naing ordinance number one zero five five one twenty, ah, two thousand seven. An ordinance providing for the traffic code of the city of Cagayan Dioro, mending pertinent provisions of the codified ordinance of the city of Cagayan Dioro and for other purposes. On section one, ang atong loading and unloading zones, a driver of a truck may park his vehicle in loading zone when actually taking up or setting down goods, provided he is present at all times and attending to the same. A driver of public utility vehicle shall stop, pick up, or unload passengers only at designated loading zones. On sections of the road where there is no prohibition against loading and unloading, he may stop to take up or set down passengers, provided it is fifty meters away from a signalized intersection. So, na tay nga na, pero, I'm more focused on sa oras ba. Now, ah, article, I think fifteen, sa track ban, section ninety-seven, truck routes and limited track ban cargo trucks, ah, gravel and sun trucks and other heavy cargo trucks with eight wheels and up, or those gross vehicle weights exceed four thousand five hundred kilograms. Eh, napod sila ikuwan sa oras. Including tractor trailers or containerized haulers shall not be allowed to travel or enter loader unload cargoes from seven to nine AM and from, and from five to seven PM in the following areas of the city. Madam Chair, nagtrygyo ko ug biyahe mga, mga alasays, mga alasyete, and naggyutay mga kakakita nga, dagan na kay mga hardware, nga sayo kaayo, alasays, alasyete palang, gababag na ang ilang mga help, kaya ga, ga, daog ug mga, mga, ilang mga karga. Tanawan sanatun, I think, ayab sa mga pictures, napuibaan may nga ni, ang uban manggud, fast food chains na sila yung mga gina-download ang nga na. I think, though, ganina, di kid kay nga nakatraffic, maya na, kanangan mga, mga postura. I think na na'to na ma, mausab nga, nanamagida ang negosyo. I think my prayer lang, Madam Chair, hopefully, tanan ma-review lang na'to, nga, ah, to review the ordinance, and due to the heavy traffic now, can we add a specific time for the loading and unloading, not only for those specific vehicles? Nanamogin nakabotan dito, pero mga dinagko magigayo. Ang ako lang is, tanatanan, sa iyong pasan na all. Hopefully, preana, na, di naman na'to na maiswag ng hardware dia, pero naggyut siya sa maine ng mga dalan na makakosog traffic. Pwede ba nga atong iset though, I already called, ah, RTA about this, nga wala mangida specific nga oras. Hopefully, tanatanan nga mga sakyanan. Disagka nilang sa, during rush hour lang gyut, Madam Chair. Ngatana, delay sila mag-unload ug load, kaya para lang at least delay kayo makadugang sa grabe nga traffic. Mora, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Bernie Esparsia. So, let us revisit the, ano, and implement, ah, refer to Committee on Public Utilities. So, the next speaker is Majority of Floor Leader, Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya.
No, let's proceed to the agenda.
Muna. Ah, muna to?
Muna, is 4.
Mora, ramadugasturia. Anyway, anyway, so muna dito siya. Oo, okay, thank you very much. So let us proceed, Majority of Floor Leader, Councillor Ian Mark Nakaya.
Tabi, ramaniato sa hay. Girl, pagtabi, punmugdiya girl.
Ready na na yang hapak.
Di sa'ta makurintian, ano eh, Councillor Bernie? Nagkewile? Tumba nato din eh. Anyway, we now proceed to the agenda proper, Madam Presiding Officer. First item is proposed resolution number 2023-248, returning to the barangay council of barangay number 3 the city's ordinance number 1 series of 2022. Covering its annual budget, budget for calendar year 2022 with an estimated income of 3,208,772 pesos with information that said ordinance is operative in its entirety. May we ask the Chair to recognize Councillor? Ah, Councillor Ian Lam Lim.
Councillor Ian Lam Lim, you are recognized. Doon na kay siya uy. Yung gitana George Go King.
Madam Chair, may hapon. Madam Chair, everything is in order. I move to approve proposed resolution number 2023-248.
Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Number two is proposed resolution number 2023-249, urging all punong barangays chairpersons of Sangguniang Kabataan, regional and/or provincial directors of national government, agencies or instrumentalities and heads chiefs of city government offices, departments of the city to intensify the campaign against illegal drugs through social media platforms such as Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, etc. And to use the hashtag DILG, PADS, Department of the Interior and Local Government, DILG memorandum dated September 22, 2022. Since Councillor Romeo Caliza is on official business, may we ask the Chair to recognize Councillor Roger Abada.
Councillor Roger Abada, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Majority of Floor. Considering that resolution number 2023-249 is in order, I move to approve.
Any second? Objection? Okay, comment, Councillor Bernie Esparsia?
Madam Chair, I review the appendix, Madam Chair. Ako lang ipangutan na, or baka ano lang for styling lang kay, when we say magut Facebook, na maguy personal, ug naapoy fan pages. Unsa ba ni, kung, for example, kung what if kunasay personal nga Facebook, kailangan ba siya appeal ang iyang personal or katurang sa office lang nga fan page? Official lang kay, like, I know, sa mobas, namantay mga personal nga pages. I'm sure naiban nga kuwan mga department napod sila personal, pero naapoy ka ng fan page yun sa mismo sa department. Unsa ba ni, all ba ni, or kailangan fan pages lang or official lang? Ana lang, I think kuwan lang for styling lang siguro ni.
Official gina siya, di gina magpersonal, di ba? Majority of Floor Leader?
Official, but if the
Gusto siya personal?
Yes, if the director, if the president, if the chairman would like to
Is there specific instruction? Gi-encourage ang empleyado? So it could be personal also? So official and personal, depends on you, depends on the individual, okay? Okay, thank you very much, Councillor Bernie Esparsia. So where are we?
For the approval.
Okay. Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Number three is proposed resolution number 2023-250, adapting and strongly endorsing to the concerned government agencies and officials or referring to the concerned City Council standing committees adhering resolutions adopted by the Rotary Youth City Council, Bats 2022, for favorable consideration and appropriate action. Move for its approval, Madam Presiding Officer.
Second? Any objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Number four is proposed ordinance number 2023-95, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Uwi, representing the City Government of Cagayan Dioro to enter into and sign the MOA with the Philippine Statistics Authority, PSA, represented by its Regional Director Janet C. Aves, C.E.E.D.M., covering the implementation of the project entitled Filsis Birth Registration Assistance Project for the Local Government of Cagayan Dioro or BP, PBRAP, under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. May we ask the Chair to recognize Councillor Suzette Magtaas Daba?
Councillor Suzette Magtaas Daba, you are recognized.
Madam Chair, everything is in order. I move to approve proposed ordinance number 2023-95.
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second? Muna.
Sige lang.
Sige lang ko na.
Oh, di, sige lang, sa yato, meaning we will proceed, Madam Presiding Officer. Move to approve second final reading.
Second?
Huh? Oh, oh, second, chef.
Pwede ba? Okay, Councillor?
He will not raise, no, there's nothing to discuss, there's nothing to discuss on second final reading. Ah, okay.
Oo, sige. Okay, Councillor Attorney James Judith?
Just for my education, Madam Chair and Majority of Floor Leader, because in, number one, it involves budget, na labigit ang budget pero resolution to gamit, basi styling lang. And number four, wala'y budget involved, but we called it ordinance. Or, amay the one
MOA, MOA. It's a, it's a MOA.
Ah, okay, ra.
MOA.
Ah, okay, so that's why we give him the power. Ang iklaro lang ako, for my education, okay?
Thank you very much. Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Number five is proposed ordinance number 2023-96, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Uwi, representing the City Government of Cagayan Dioro to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement with V.A. Department of Agriculture Bureau of Fisheries and Aquatic Resources Regional Office 10, B. Congressional Office of Honorable Rufus B. Rodriguez, C.E. Pilais Ranch Incorporated, and D. Department of Environment and Natural Resources Regional Office 10, DNR 10, covering the development improvement and conservation of the country's fishery and aquatic resources in Region 10 under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. May I ask the Chair to recognize Councillor J.
Councillor J. Pasqual? You are recognized?
Hello? Ah, may ayong utok na tuntanan. Ah, Madam Chair, everything is in order. I move to approve proposed ordinance number 2023-96.
Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried. Murag happy ka diya, Councillor J. Pasqual?
Ah, okay. Move to approve second final reading.
Anyway, proceed.
For second final reading.
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Number six, A and B. A is proposed ordinance number 2023-97, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Uwi, representing the City Government of Cagayan Dioro to enter into and sign the MOA with the National Housing Authority, represented by its acting Regional Manager for Region 10, Alfonso L. Borlagdan, covering the collaboration of the parties for the development of the Cagayan Dioro resettlement and socialized housing project 5, Seedorship 5, Phase 2. At the city-owned property identified as Lot number 18503-C, CAD 237, located in barangay San Simon de City, involving the NHA's 50 million financial assistance fund contribution to the city for the construction of 132 housing units under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. B is proposed ordinance number 2023-98, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Uwi, representing the City Government of Cagayan Dioro to enter into and sign the contract of loan with real estate mortgage with the National Housing Authority, represented by its acting Regional Manager for Region 10, Alfonso L. Borlagdan, covering the grant of loan by the NHA to the City Government of Cagayan Dioro in the amount of 50 million pesos, treated as half loan, half grant for the development of Cagayan Dioro resettlement, socialized housing project 5, Seedorship 5, Phase 2 of the city-owned property identified as Lot number 18503-C, CAD 237, located in barangay San Simon de City containing 132 housing units under the terms and conditions stipulated therein. May I ask the Chair to recognize Councillor Edgar Edkabanlas?
Councillor Edgar Edkabanlas, you are recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Majority of Floor Leader. These two proposed ordinances were duly deliberated in the committee level. I move for the approval.
Any second? Objection? Councillor Bernie Esparsia, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Majority of Floor. Ah, Madam Chair, mangutan na lang ko, kani 132, nanabani kanang beneficiaries na, nanabay kuwan kay. Sa wala'y pababulpabul, Madam Chair, baka pwede maprioritize ang mga taga campo patag. Kananam po sila 'yung mga court order dito, Madam Chair. So just in case lang, baka wala pa'y mga beneficiaries ani, baka pwede mapriority ang mga taga patag, Madam Chair. Mora, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We will refer this to the, to the Committee of Councillor Edgar Edkabanlas. Yes?
Ah, the construction of these 132 units is still ongoing and of course, there are no specified beneficiaries yet. It will be chosen after the construction of these houses. Ta, kanapubli ma sa patag. Di, ilan kanan dun, ilan kalibu kanan, Madam Chair. Duh, kanakay ng problema, gamay magay ng 132. But we hope nga ma-accommodate sila. CHUD will decide on that. CHUD will decide on that. We will refer that to CHUD.
Okay. Thank you very much, Councillor Edgar Edkabanlas. Let's proceed, Councillor Ian Mark Nakaya.
For the ruling, Madam Presiding Officer, for the approval.
Ah, any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
For inclusion, we have items 7, 8, and 9. So, huh? Ah, okay, number 10 from Councillor James Judith. So move for their inclusion, Madam Presiding Officer.
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Seven is proposed resolution number 2023-251, earnestly requesting the Center of Inclusive Development Studies, CIDS, of the University of Science and Technology of Southern Philippines, USTP System, through its President, Dr. Ambrosio B. Cultura, the second to conduct the following research studies: A, composting biodegradable waste using black soldier fly; B, use of compost derived from composting biodegradable waste using black soldier fly; C, use of rainwater harvesting technology in public schools to address water scarcity; D, community impact assessment of the flood risk management project of Cagayan Dioro City. Move for its approval, Madam Presiding Officer.
Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Number eight is proposed resolution number 2023-252, declaring every second Thursday of January of every year as National Baptist Day in the City of Cagayan Dioro in cognizance of the Baptists' continuous pursuit of their evangelical mission to contribute to nation-building by establishing Christian schools that instill academic excellence and build character in individuals and churches that proclaim teach and share biblical principles for the betterment of society and in order to focus public attention to the programs and activities given impetus in the observance thereof. Move for its approval, Madam Presiding Officer.
Any second? Any objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried. I would like to clarify, Majority of Floor Leader, so this is the Baptists sa ilan eh?
Yes.
Yeah, because they wanted that January of second, Thursday of January. So this is sa ilan eh, so depende on the denominations, no? Kung sa ilan gustus at mahitabo, no? This is exclusively for the Baptists, right? Okay.
It has been lavid by Bishop
Andales?
Andales.
Yeah, yeah.
He went personally to the office of the secretary.
Actually, everybody, any denominations can always do the same as this resolution with the Baptists, no church, through Bishop Andales. So everybody's, ano, welcome, okay?
Move to approve second final reading.
Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Number nine is proposed resolution number 2023-251, commending and congratulating the adhering Cagayanon students who competed and emerged victorious in the recently concluded World International Mathematical Olympiad 2022 held in Thailand. To it, we have A, Ray Stefan Choa, award, gold medalist, category, senior secondary, school, Xavier University Senior High School; B, Den Ethan Josh, A, Castro, silver medalist, primary five, Saint Mary's School; C, Johnny Cape Nali, silver medalist, kindergarten, city central school, wow, first time; D, Ethan Bryan; C, bronze medalist, primary five, Oro Christian Gray School; E, Marie Nicole Andrea Vinyas, bronze medalist, senior secondary, Xavier University Senior High School. Move proponent, City Vice Mayor Joseline B. Rodriguez. Move for its approval, Madam Presiding Officer.
Any second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second and final reading.
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Number 10 is proposed resolution number 2023-252, expressing the 20th City Council's commendation and gratitude to the officers and members of the Cagayan Dioro City Police Office, kokpo headed by Police Colonel Aron. Colonel, Colonel Romanba? Okay, okay, full pledgeman. Mendia, for a job well done in the maintenance of the city's peace and order during the ultride season and New Year's Day celebration. May I ask the Chair to recognize Councillor James Judith?
Councillor Attorney James Judith, you are recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Considering that everything is in order, I move for the approval of proposed resolution number 2023-252.
Second?
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second? Objection? I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
There being no other pending, move to adjourn, Madam Presiding.
Thank you very much, session adjourned.